Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November 5th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
All five selectmen are present, as well as town administrator.
Pledge of Allegiance. Want to go? You're on.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There we go. That was the fastest one yet.
Thank you. Yeah, he moved. He got right into that. Announcements. Alan.
Okay. I'll pass right now.
By me?
We're all processing that.
I passed.
Wait, what?
Oh. Jim?
By me?
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. You all set, Jim?
No, we're all set. We've already all passed.
Everybody passed?
Well, not me. I have some things here.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
All right, citizens' comments.
Wait, wait, I got some announcements.
She's got stuff.
I didn't know what you guys were all doing.
Excuse me, well, go right ahead then. I thought everybody passed.
No, no, not me.
It's not passed over. That was a couple of months back.
Oh, boy. Okay, meet Ben Franklin, coming to Wareham Friday, November 8th, 7:00 PM at the Wareham High School. Ben Franklin impersonator, Robert Dovidis, gives tribute to one of America's greatest patriots. Enjoy Mr. Franklin's firsthand presentation of colonial history, sponsored by the Wareham Minutemen and militia companies. Holiday Fair, Saturday, December 7th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Wareham Free Library, featuring homemade cookies, pick-your-own-favorites, craft vendors, perfect gifts for that special person. Used book sale, sponsored by the Friends of the Wareham Free Library. All proceeds benefit the library. And the New England Irish Harp Orchestra Concert, Sunday, December 15th, 2:30 PM at the Redmond Hall, 758 Main Street, Wareham. Doors open at 2:00 PM. Light, Irish, and holiday-themed refreshments. Tickets are $10. It may be purchased at the door or at the main or spinny branch of the library, sponsored by the Friends of the Wareham Free Library.
Okay. Citizens' comments. Come on down.
Coffee?
You've been a while, so come on down. Oh, you got a box. That can't be good.
Oh, geez.
I hope there's nothing live in there.
Yay, I love when Sandy comes up.
No, it's not.
Someone has a birthday.
Who has a birthday?
Oh, and it's his favorite. He has the hostess with the mostess.
We're missing about 72 candles.
We don't want to turn on, we don't want to get the fire lamps going.
Yeah, they will.
All right.
Oh, wow.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Alan. Happy birthday to you. Yay. So, I won't ask you, embarrass you, and tell you to say how old you are.
Seventy-five.
Just old, we know that. No, I'm going to take care of this, though. You know why? Because I know this has been signed off. You know why?
Don't touch him, I got to call it.
See, this is Sunco. Sunco is the company that's doing the school lot down there. And they get signed off in the committee, too, so. I know it's been signed off because the school did it. But that's all right, we'll take care of it. Oh, I don't care. What do you got? I like vanilla.
Is there chocolate chip?
No, okay.
Okay, here's sprinkles.
Ooh, look at that rainbow.
Thank you.
The one with the cookie.
Thank you.
Rainbow sprinkles, you're all set.
Says he who knows. No, this one. Would that one work? Why, would you want that one?
Are they from Verolife?
You got vanilla, vanilla, too.
Yeah, they made them.
We got something in it, though.
They're bonded Verolife.
Mr. White?
Well, they're not chocolate chip. Maybe, what do they call that stuff? The stuff that Heath bought or something. That's what it looks, something like that.
Now, it's my turn to have comments.
Oh, you mean you got comments, too?
Comments.
Oh, my God.
I mean, yeah, you couldn't give him a gift tonight? Sorry.
Great, she's all cracked up on sugar, and now she's up there.
Sandy Slaven, last Wednesday, I walked apart of Minuteman Forest by Parkwood with someone from Wareham, sorry, Wylons Land Trust, and they want to connect our two walking trails. And when we did the path, I know we found about six trees down that were down recently in a storm. Now, Mary and I walked the same trails on Sunday, and someone had cut them. So, I thanked the Wylons Land Trust. No, you got a good fairy there, a good angel, somebody else cut them, and we don't know who it is. So, whoever it was who cleared the trails, I thank you.
Was it near the wetlands buffer?
The second comp, it's a comment. I was at the transfer station about a month ago, and I watched this man take a sofa. It had been cut into four pieces, and he loaded each piece into the dumpster, one after another. I figured, well, that's one way to fill up our dumpsters very fast at the transfer station. Then, on the way out, I watched this man take a big recliner off his car and dump it in the metal-only section. I reported it. That's just not metal-only, it's someone's recliner, and so I was disappointed that type of debris is being put into our transfer station.
This is the Rochester one?
Yes. So, I was surprised at that, disappointed.
They periodically had somebody up there checking or just asking what people were dumping, so.
They have a guy right there all the time.
But they also, they've also had a young woman checking when you come in to make sure you have your sticker and asking what you're disposing of.
A young boy and a young man in there, I've gone through there a bunch of times now, and this young boy's always there.
That transfer station is run by Covanta, and the stuff is not supposed to come in there, but they don't care what people bring in, for the most part. And we don't do any, we tell them what we're not, we would tell them, they know what the regulations are, they're posted on the gate, and they don't enforce them. And the person who was checking that, they were hired, they were just checking the stickers to see if you had one or what town you were from, not turning back people who had things that they shouldn't be disposing of in there.
Yes, it was amazing how many times I see a piece of, somebody took a house apart, and therefore some lumber from the house got dumped into it, but I guess...
We're talking about putting a person there from the district.
Eventually.
We'd like to, even next year, but there's a lot going on with the district, so.
When they, when asked about it, the response was, as long as they had a valid sticker, they could put what they want in it. So, I saw a VCR, a tape recorder, all being dumped in there also. They said as long as it didn't have a screen on it, it was fine. So, anyway, that was my, I know it's been a while since I've been up, but...
All right, we got a few more minutes before the tax hearing, so we'll go on to appointments, reappointments, and interviews. Police Building Study Committee?
I want to interview somebody.
Yeah, we got Claire's up for this. Come on down, Claire. This is only your third time. I don't know how you're doing it again after that last one. I felt so bad, though, that that worked out that way, that he sunsetted the committee. If it had just stayed running, even if it didn't do anything, it would have been great.
Yeah, that was a very, very tough night. I'd be 100% honest about it, I have not gotten over it. Needless to say, the town has done two prior feasibility studies, one in 1995, one in 2005. Both of them very different with their programming. I had the privilege of sitting on both of those. The second one was very exhaustive. We did spend almost two years, leaving no stone unturned. When you have a public building, any kind of public construction that you're doing in a town, there's a very specific process the inspector general lays out, and it's, it has to be followed. And so, having been through two of them, I think I have a pretty good understanding of how that all comes into play and what needs to be done with the programming and the scope and the hiring of your designer selection person. I also think that, having sat on two of them, I have a lot of information up here as to what's been looked at, you know, what we've looked at in terms of areas of where they could go, not go, different scenarios. We've looked at many, many police stations that were built and then were 10 or 15 years past so that we could compare what, what they missed that we need to look for. In going through the report a few days ago, the one from 2005, right on target for the projections of population and number of people on the department, so that one, I think having that information will be a good stepping off point, and that's why I'd like to serve on this one, because I think I can be very helpful in bringing some of that information forward, save some time and energy, and hopefully get this going, and I really would like to see this happen.
You deserve to sit there and get to see it finished at some point, and hopefully this is the time.
I hope so. I hope the third time is a charm.
I certainly hope so. Anybody have any questions they'd like to ask, Claire?
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we still got a couple of minutes. Who else do we have? I know there's five positions. Who's this one? David Hurd?
Wal Gerard.
Wal Gerard? Yeah, well, there's three, this should be, he's not here because he's had a thing come up, so.
Charlie Kluber?
Yeah.
Charlie sent us an email. Charlie has a family issue.
Yeah.
And he basically, for Charlie's case, he already did a fire station in Bourne.
Hi, Paul.
Hi. He was involved with actually building a fire station, so.
All right. Mr. Hurd?
Yes, thank you for inviting me, and I hope that I have the opportunity to serve on the Police Building Committee. I'm on the Finance Committee, and we have not taken a vote in the Finance Committee to determine who should, on the Finance Committee, should be on this board, so hopefully I will be the one that's chosen, selected to represent.
Well, if you're chosen, then we won't, you won't need to be one of the at-large people, though. As a matter of fact, you wouldn't, you couldn't, actually.
Right, I can't, being a member of the Finance Committee. But I'm hopeful that I'll be able to do that, and I'd love to see this brought to a conclusion. And I think my background is good for it. I'm a registered engineer. I've worked on, as a project manager, on construction projects for years, and, yeah, I've worked in emergency preparedness, and this town deserves a good police station.
Well, and I hope you're the one chosen, because you can't sit on it any other way. You know that, right?
Yes, I do.
The Finance Committee people can't be on any committees. They're barred from it, so. So, hopefully, you'll be the guy.
Thank you.
All right, how about Paul?
Yes, yes. About five years ago, I was in the police station getting a gun permit, and I had no idea that that building was as small as it was. To sit down with the person that I was talking to, another man had to get up off a desk and offer it to us. You know, it's ridiculous. We get a great police department, we're not treating them well. I'd like to be a part of getting a good police station in this town.
Great. Any questions of the board?
No, I know both people will.
I have none.
All right, no questions. Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Thanks for your interest.
We'll probably do these next week, all right? Do these appointments next week. One thing I've been thinking... Interviews next week. Yeah, because we got more interviews, so.
One thing we've been thinking about with the model that we chose for the committee is, we left off the EMS director, and if his facility is going to be part of that, we should have him on there as ex officio.
Make him ex officio.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you can do that anyway, if you want, make him ex officio anytime.
Make him your designee.
Remember, we kind of, if I remember right, I kind of gave you, like, free reins on that, so.
Don't we decide the composition of the board?
Not an ex official, a guy that doesn't, is not a voting member.
No, we would still have to, we would still add that as an ex officio member, though, by vote.
We do control it. If you look at the town meeting vote, okay? Town meeting votes said the Board of Selectmen shall set up this study committee. It is under our purview.
But an ex official isn't a voting member.
I know, but...
He can have him come to all the meetings if he, he can have him come to all the meetings if he so chooses, and he doesn't need us for that.
Well, it's public meeting, anybody can vote.
Exactly, of course, he doesn't need anything for that.
It's okay, it was outside the scope of the article, so it doesn't count anyways.
Huh?
You're not an official member of the committee unless we create that position.
We're not, he's not asking him to be official.
I think he wants, I think he does want to be a member, member ex.
Want him to be official or ex official?
Ex official.
Ex official is a member that can speak.
So, you want to add him to it? That's different. We'll add him to it.
It's a member that speaks but can't vote. That's what an ex official anomaly is.
Right, an ex official can't speak.
We just, we take care of it.
Yeah, he's a member but not vote.
Yeah.
But he can be, he can sit there with them and bring up the concerns of the EMS department, which is, I think what Derek is looking for here.
We'll take care of it next week. It's under our control.
Well, if you're asking it to be, you know, to be a participant, I don't have a problem with that. We can put him on and make him a participant. We can just change the makeup of the structure, we can do that.
Yeah, easy enough.
Yes.
Easy enough.
Like I just said.
All right, let's go to the classification hearing. Do you have a road commissioner to appoint to?
Yes.
Move to open the hearing.
All right, motion to open the hearing by Peter, seconded by Mary. Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, me, yes, all right, it's open. All right, go for it. How you doing?
How you doing?
Great, how are you?
I'm doing great.
I emailed everybody a copy of this presentation. Did anybody get a chance to?
Yeah, I looked at it.
Yep.
Okay. So, the purpose of this hearing is to determine whether the town will continue to use this, utilize a single rate for all classes of property, or to split the rate, shifting the burden towards the commercial, industrial, and personal property from the residential class. Generally, an 80% residential versus 20% CIP share of the overall property makeup is considered the minimum, which to begin to consider a split tax rate. This is due to the fact that with a CIP share lower than 4%, any shift results in a very small benefit to the residential and a larger burden for the CIP taxpayer without proper support from the tax base. I've listed...
Hold the mic closer.
Mic closer. We need a new system in here.
What?
We need a new system in here.
Once I'm not loud enough?
Well, you're the liaison to the department, aren't you?
So, I've listed out here the past 10 years, and as you can see, our ratios haven't changed all that much. Am I loud enough now?
Bob, is it okay?
So, just pull, pull the mic right to your mouth, Larry. There you go, right there.
Is it on?
Is it on?
Is it on?
Green light.
A green light?
There we go. Ah, I knew there had to be a glitch.
There was a glitch in the mess.
So, for the past 10 years, we have been hovering around the same ratios, and on the following page, which is page two, I've done a chart that illustrates that and the changes between 2010 and 2020. Our ratios have remained fairly steady. For fiscal 2020, our average residential value is 293,000. Our average commercial value is 701,000, and our average industrial value is 674,000. I've used the average residential and the average commercial values as the benchmarks for our shift illustration below. In this chart below here, I've listed out the CIP shift on the left-hand side, what the residential rate would be, which is estimated, and what the commercial tax rate would be, also estimated. Plus, before we get too much farther in, I'd like to let you know that we have received our preliminary certification of our values. Our final values have been submitted, but, and they are under review at this point in time. So, we will need to keep this hearing open and come back next week and affirm the vote when we receive final certification. I apologize, I tried to move the hearing one week out, but Janet had already put it in the paper, I figured it would be too much to move it.
That's fine.
Okay, so, for the regular estimated tax at this point would be $10.98, up from $10.94 last year. And at the highest CIP shift that we would be allowed to do would be 1.5. That residential rate would drop to 9.87, but our commercial rate would rise to 1647. Given the averages that we have here, the average tax bill for residential with our regular rate would be $3,217, and the commercial would be $7,697. On the next page, and what I'd like to do is go through this and then, you know, entertain any questions and dive deeper if you need to. On the next page, I have a chart which shows the residential savings versus the commercial At a 1.1 shift, the residential savings would be $64.46, but the increase to the commercial industrial would be $771. At the highest 1.5 shift, the residential would save $325, at a cost of $3,848 to the average commercial. Summary considerations, a split rate does not increase the revenue, it simply shifts the tax burden. A shift would make Wareham less attractive to new commercial industrial development and small business relocation. This shift would also impact summer cottage residents as their personal property bills would increase as well, so even though we'd be saving on the residential taxes, they still, summer people would still see an increase in their personal property tax. And many of the town's commercial properties are leased. Landlords typically pass the increases on to tenants, thus impacting our smaller businesses, which are typically locally owned. I did some community comparisons and looked at some of the communities that are surrounding us on the following page, page four. Wareham actually has one of the lowest town tax rate of Plymouth County, and it's one of the lowest in the entire state significantly. And you can see here, we've got Wareham, Bourne, Plymouth, Middleborough, Matipoiset, Marion, Carver, Rochester. I listed out what the average tax bill was for 2019 with the rates and also the single-family values, so you could see how those relate to one another. I also looked on the Department of Revenue website, that shows Wareham is having one of the lowest, as we talked about. The state average tax bill for a single-family home is $5,789 in 2019, as opposed to our So, as you can see, we are fairly well positioned as far as our town tax rate is concerned, as far as the overall state. Pages five and six are just some supplementary information for you, which is just an average single-home value, average commercial value, and average industrial value from 2015 through You'll notice that our average single-family home value went from 280,000 last year to 293,000 this year. The average commercial went from 679 in 2019 to 700, and the industrial went from 625 in 2019 to 674 in 2020. I also have a, are there any questions, any discussion?
Go ahead, Alan.
What we always hear from the public is, we have all this new construction, new commercial, you know, with the mall and everything else, and how we should be having so much more income, and I don't think people understand how this all works. If you look very closely at, like, the commercial value of the count, I assume 519 is actual commercial enterprises?
Yes, and it's...
It's gone down from the previous year, so even though we've had more increase of what you physically see in West Wareham, obviously, we've lost in other areas. And the industrial has actually, from 2015 to 2020, gone down five units total. So, even though we think we have this growth, the public sees, perceives it exactly opposite of what's really happening, and somewhere along the line, we need to explain it to them better, because what they see is not the reality.
In that vein, if we take a look at, I understand what you're saying, and I understand the public perception, but we have such a mix of properties here that sometimes what we see is the big stuff going up, and those are only a few projects in the overall scheme of things. But if you take a look at just the commercial properties that are over, valued over $2 million, we only have 32 of them that are over $2 million. The rest of it is smaller stuff. If you include the industrial in that, it goes up to 41. Now, that's out of 635 properties, we've, of commercial and industrial, we only have 40, 41 that are over $2 million. So, that speaks, speaks right to your, to your point, that we do have, I'm really thrilled to see the growth that we have undergone over the past five years since I've been here, but I think we have a long way to go before we can support the rest of it. But that's my opinion as a real estate person, appraiser, whatever.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I just got one thing. Yeah, one of the things that, you know, when we do these hearings and people read their media reports afterwards, is when we quote that the average tax bill is $3,058, people say, well, that's just taxes, what about the fire districts? When you add those in, the Wareham tax bill for the Wareham Fire District residents jumps up to 3710, and for onset, it would be 3791, because onset has a slightly higher district tax rate per thousand than we do. But still, if you take that number and put that in here, you've got Wareham at, say, even if you call it $3,800, you've got Bourne with 900 more, you've got Plymouth with about, you know, 2,000 more, you've got Middleborough with, you know, 1,200 more, Matipoiset with about 2,600 more. So, when people say, well, the town doesn't provide, you know, the level of services that other communities provide, this is why. This is the exact reason why. If we were able to garner another 20% in revenue from the property owners, then we would be able to provide a corresponding amount of increase in services. So, even with the districts in there, we still pay a very much relatively low property tax per property here in this town.
That's an excellent point. Thank you for clarifying that.
Mary, anybody else?
Yeah, I, looking at the average commercial and industrial value, the counts have gone down. What'd they do, knock the buildings down? They're still commercial.
What you're seeing is shifting, as well as...
From what to what?
Well, I can't tell you each, what happens sometimes is, let's say...
Wendy's fault.
They'll take two, you know where they put, on Cranberry Highway, they put the dollar, there's a Dollar General there? They took two properties and combined them, so you lose one, but you're really developing one. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of shifting going on. There's also a commercial building that went from commercial to condos, there could be a commercial building that goes back to a single family, so there's shifting. So there's shifting that goes on within the town.
And it's been steady for five years, the trend going down. But it's not large.
No, it's within, right. Well, they've gone up modestly compared to the residential, but yes. We did just, we are in the middle of our five-year state-mandated reevaluation. We're towards the end of it. We've been working on it all year. And Steve was in charge of the past three years doing a full data collection on everything in town, which we have finished and we hope to keep up to date now that we've done everything. We did have an outside firm come in and do the commercial industrial, and we actually got some of the exempt done as well, which the DOR is happy about, that we've updated our data.
All right, for myself.
So I'm sorry, Peter, so that might be part of what you're seeing too, is when we go out and we did the data collection, we might have found that this wasn't truly a commercial one. It should have been an industrial code or this or that, so.
The numbers aren't big.
No, they're not, but it is just shifting.
Also, on some of that, to answer that, the commercials have pretty much stayed level. We're having like, the only few big projects we had was the apartments in Rosebrook. But we've also had over the last five years, a lot of residential subdivisions go in. So basically, your number of residentials have increased more than the commercials. So of course, now that changes the shift, it'll look like the residential's gone up and the commercial's gone down a little bit. So that's where you're seeing a decrease in the commercial parcels.
Right, there's been a lot of development on the residential side.
In comparison to what the commercials were, correct?
Yeah, that's what happens all the time. Unfortunately, you get to the, if you ever get to the place where you can change the rate, you, then somebody will come along and build a bunch of houses, and it changes, it drops it back out of the zone, so to speak. But in Wareham, I think we have a little difference. And I, you know, I'm sort of prepared to go with the one-to-one this time, like we do. But I'm really looking at somewhere not too far down the road of changing it. And the reason why I say that is, for one, the commercial people, and you made the point, are paying a much less tax rate than they would in any other town, in this town.
No.
Yeah, because our tax rate is low.
Oh, our tax rate is low?
It's so low that they're paying less in taxes. They move that building to some other town and move their operation to some other town, which, you know, they wouldn't because they need it to be wherever they are, right? They'd pay way more in taxes in those, especially if you look at your list, than they pay here. So they can afford to pay a little more and still be operational, so to speak, okay? You know what I'm saying? That's all I'm saying, is there is a cushion there that others don't have because we have such a low tax rate. See what I'm saying? So at some point, you know, we might not make 20%, and we might get to 18% or 19% or whatever it's going to be. And then it becomes the time when we say, okay, we can shift a little of the burden off the residents. And I think it's coming sooner than later. I think we have a lot of things in the pipeline right now that might change that coming up. And the other thing that's not in the agreement, of course, because it goes in personal property, is all the solar pilots we have and stuff, that's really a commercial entity, but it doesn't show up as a commercial entity.
Actually, in these figures, it does. The CIP is commercial, industrial, and personal property. So all those personal property is the commercial rate, and it does show up in these numbers.
All right, so it's showing up in the numbers anyway.
So basically, I mean, our job is to present the numbers to you. It's in your purview as to which way you want to split it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get that.
But to answer some of your questions too, Jackie and I had done a little calculation this evening. When she had mentioned about the properties over $2 million, between commercial, industrial, there's 635 parcels. Out of that 42, she said, was evaluated over the $2 million. The basically, your big box stores, your big plazas only makes up 6% of that commercial 18% factor. So basically, the rest of that, 95 or 94% of your 18%, is your mom and pops. It's your Minerva's Pizza downtown, the Hallmark consignment shop. Mama Mary's in the center of town who's going to pay the lease. Those are your smaller, your 95% of that thing. You only get a nickel of the big guys that usually absorb most of that cost. So we present the facts, it's your purview which way to do, but we just want to let you know what those percentages are. You say the commercial can pay, the Walmarts will pay it, but the Walmarts are going to be consumers, so.
I think I understand that. I think we all understand that they are a portion of whatever.
Right, but you mentioned a lot of percentages, like Peter, they don't realize what they are. So we try to lay them out to give you the most information we can and then allow you to make the decisions that you want to make.
Well, and I get that, and that's all you can do. But for me personally, I think we're getting, we'll get to a point very quickly here now where this can change and that we can take some of the burden off the residents back. Because, you know, we've been telling them, I want to tell you, as long as I've been around here, and that's been 30 years, we've been telling them, at some point, we're going to be able to do this, at some point, we're going to be able to do this. And we've never done it yet, that I know of. See what I mean? It's always been the same. So we talk a big game, but we never get there. And maybe we have to be more proactive in how we, what we get in here as far as businesses are concerned and other things too. Maybe we're not working that hard enough to get our numbers up. Because, you know, we have a lot of seniors in this town, whether we want to know it or not, a huge population of seniors. And if you take $200 or $300 or $150 off their tax bill, it's a big deal to them, not to us. Maybe not to me, who's still working. Maybe not to you still working, but to that senior, it's a lot of money. Especially when we're asking them to pay for a new school and, you know, other things that they have to add to the tax rate. See what I'm saying? That's all I'm saying.
Patrick, perhaps we can look into some other ways to provide some relief for some of our seniors who are more vulnerable of our population.
I would love to see that.
I will, I will get on that and come up with something with you, for you guys within the next couple of months.
We once upon a time had a fund, Papa George Memorial Fund. I set it up many years ago. And the fund was that people could donate to the fund, and it would be doled out, we had a committee, and they would deal it out. I don't know if you were around back then. But we were going to deal it out to people to help pay the seniors' taxes. So if you're in a certain rate and you needed help, this fund would help. And all you had to do every year is add a few bucks to your tax bill, you know, when you paid it. Throw a couple of dollars into the pool, and it would go in there, and then we could fund it out. For some reason or another, it got some funds, in the beginning, it got some funds. There was some money there, and we used it. But then it just died off. People never, never kept it going. And it's too bad because something like that is a good thing for seniors. You know, we help the seniors out for a small amount of money that we throw on to our tax bill when we pay it.
We may be able to find some things that we can do as a town to expand on what it already exists. But I can put that stuff together for you and have it to you in a couple of months with some indications of who we could help, what we could do, and what the process would be.
That would be very nice. And just so you know, that fund was set up by town meeting, is still available to be used. So if for some reason or another, if you, all you had to do is put it on the tax bill, you know, if you add some money here, it'll go into this fund to help seniors, we could still keep doing that. I don't know why we stopped it, but we did. And it's too bad because it doesn't go away. It was approved by town meeting, so it's still out there. It's called the Papa George Memorial Tax Fund, I think it's called.
Who manages that?
Who manages it? We actually had a committee to manage it, and if I'm not mistaken, there was somebody from the assessing department. There was a town administrator, there was a bunch of people on that. If you go and look up the thing, it's all there.
To answer your question on that, Patrick, the fund was set up, I think Papa George set it up in memory of his wife.
No, he didn't set it up. I set it up after he passed away.
Okay, but I was on that committee. I was the chairman of that committee. We did, funds were brought in, and we did give some to the seniors, but then I believe the funds no longer came in. And I'm not sure if it had been sunsetted or not because it was almost 20-something years ago that it was. But I'll check with the town collector, John Foster, because he is, one had the account to see if it's still active or has been sunsetted.
Because there was no sunset in the provision. And so means it's still inactive somewhere, it's just not being used or done. So we could look it up again. And the important thing is, is that people have to know in the tax bill that they can do that. If they throw a few extra bucks in, that that's where it's going to go.
Okay, we'll check with the collector, but why don't we?
There are a lot of people who are willing to help seniors who throw it in there.
Maybe it's something that if it's still around, needs to be publicized.
Some options, that could be state level or local level. But if we can get back to this one, we'll get on with business.
Mr. Chairman, some of the things that, and you were talking about people seeing these commercial properties and how they're bringing in all the money, I just need people to understand. A $100 million project, a new $100 million project brings in how much in new taxes?
Oh, yeah, not that much.
It brings in $1,094,000.
Right.
How many $100 million projects are there? That the, I'll tell you, the valuation of Wareham Crossing for everything, that's, is that 100?
43 million.
42 million for the whole plaza, the crossing.
They brought that back in, and I think people forget how this works. Your new growth, this is how you do your budget every year. You have your taxes, you take that forward from the previous year. You have 2.5% of that, then your new growth, and that's your new budget. So you're not getting that Wareham Crossing every year. It's not $300,000 this year, then another $300,000 to be 600, then another.
It's already into the budget.
It's already into the budget.
It's already fed in there.
In and out.
It's already, it's in the mix.
People ask this a lot of times, well, you've got that, what happens to that? Well, whatever you voted on that year at town meeting for the budget, you brought that in.
That's a good point. It's a good point, you know, and that's a good point that you made that because, see, a lot of people don't understand that. A lot of people don't understand how 2.5 even works. There's 2.5% over the levy limit from the year before. You know, I one time had to call the radio station because Falmouth was, I don't know, I might have said this before, but Falmouth was cutting taxes for like a gated community because it had some land that they didn't want developed. So they said, you know, we're going to cut your taxes by like $300,000 or $400,000 or something like that. And they were all on the radio clapping and happy as heck. What they didn't realize is that all the residents were going to pick it up. That just shifted it to all the residents. And when I told the guy that, I remember, it was that guy on XTK? He says, is that true? And I said, well, yeah. So he calls the state, and he gets back on the thing, hey, wait a minute, we're getting, we're in trouble here with this. You know, so they don't understand how it is, and how little the 2.5 formula is, at least for us. What's it, about $1 million now?
We're a little over $1 million now.
So, and this is It's not a lot of money.
The other thing to remember is that there might be unintended consequences like cranberry growers. The land that's in Chapter 61A and everything is considered commercial, so they'd get hit with a higher rate.
Yeah, and they cut their taxes two years in a row. One by 50% one year. The state devalued the property by 50%. This was probably, I want to say, around 2003, maybe 2002. The cranberry growers were having a tough time, so the state went and devalued all cranberry land and devalued it, lowered the value of it when they did it as an overall thing. And of course, that shifted all the burden to the residents. You know, so that was a problem. They did it two years in a row, actually.
Back in 2003?
About 2002, 2003, look it up, it's there. So, is anybody, oh, Alan, I'm sorry.
Two quick things, we can continue with this and move on. The programs are out there for different credits for seniors. If we look at the local towns around us and at the state level, there's quite a few different things available, what you can do. The only problem is if we decrease taxes, we have to find somewhere to make it up. Because at the end of the day, if the collections are less, then we have a problem.
Well, that's why I want the time to go through and figure out exactly what we can do, what it'll cost us, what the process is, and get that all, all the ducks in a row before I come and talk to my board and to you guys.
This would be awesome if you could do this for us.
I've looked at this before, there's options, but it's not easy.
I understand what we're trying to do is we want to help the most vulnerable of our residents and our taxpayers. And so I'm more than happy to try to figure out some other ways that we can do that.
This would be great.
Include the veterans also in that, besides seniors.
Yeah, that as well, as well.
And the other point is, I'll make it, I'll be done. Unless things have changed over the years, the personal property on large box stores and stuff, they used to adjust their inventory, so in the fiscal year, whatever came up that we would have a number, they would purposely reduce their inventory to the lowest number possible, keep their tax exposure at the lowest number. I'm not sure if that's still going on these years.
Well, I'm sure it is.
It's not something that I see on a daily basis because there are a lot of different ways that some of these corporations get out of paying personal property taxes at all, depending on how they form the company.
If they're an S corp, they don't pay it.
Right, so the corporations don't pay it. So there are a lot of different things that play into that, but.
Walmart is extremely good at it.
And Mr. Chairman, one last thing, because Select and Title Bomb threw out some numbers before, and people are saying, well, you know, the difference between Bourne and Wareham, it's, you know, $930. What does that really mean? Well, when you go over, we have, according to this, 9,426 residential parcels, so, or homes. If that's, if that's our average single-family tax bill off of that, and our difference is $930, we would have an additional 8.7 million if we had the same average single-family tax bill as Bourne. If it were Plymouth, we'd have about 19.6 million. If we're the same as Middleborough, it'd be about 10.7 million. Mattapoisett, 25.1 million. Marion, 29.5 million. Carver, 15.7 million. And Rochester, 14.7.
So if I can jump in on that, we're talking about the split rates. We, you have to, I mean, some of the towns have districts and some don't. So you really need to add in the district.
That was including the district.
Okay, which is good, and like Carver has what, 3,000 houses, 30-something hundred houses? We have 90-something hundred?
We have 9,426.
I'm just ballparking it. And they have a split rate in their, I believe, in their ratio of commercial, the CIP to residential is much lower than the 20%. So, and just hear me out here. Bridgewater, who has a big percentage difference, does it, has the same tax rate. So it's just a choice of what the towns want to do. And is it going to impact, you know, business, you know, places wanting to do business in the town, new business? Some of the smaller places have a smaller tax burden because their properties are of less value. It would, it still would be, what is it, a half percent max it can go up? Is that what it is, 1.5?
1.5 is the max.
Half percent max, right? So although there's a rule of thumb, I see towns don't always follow it. Towns make their own decisions based upon what they think is best for them. It is something we could do for consideration, and maybe you can move forward from that and be creative and do some further tax adjustments as you move down over a few years beyond if you did make a split rate. You know, just, because people's perception change and
What do you mean by?
Well, I mean, just
Tax adjustments.
With tax adjustments, you can do overrides, can't you?
Excuse me?
You can do overrides, can't you?
Well, the assessors don't do overrides, the selectmen and the board do overrides.
The towns can do overrides, right?
Override what?
Tax overrides. So I mean, perceptions change as you move along.
Those are some of your options, Select, and we present the numbers, the values, and what they could be. It's your purview to decide how you want to do the split tax rate or do overrides or whichever. But just to answer your question on Carver, Carver did the split rate years ago because the majority of their land is cranberry growers, and they wanted the cranberry growers to pay more. So they went to the split to charge more to the cranberries, even though they have the reduced value for 61.
61A is considered commercial.
So basically, it's, we present the facts, it's up to you to do it. So split it one or split, and then we'll go whichever way you want us to, want us to do it.
All right, so the other thing, what Derek was just talking about with 2.5 two and a half, we had very low property values when two and a half came in. We had a lot of seasonal properties, way, way, way more than we have now. They were all seasonal, property values were really low. And so, two and a half took off from that point. So it's a lo, it takes a long time to catch up, and you never do, because, you know, the things keep on going. Let's take, for instance, you take my hometown, right? There's about half the population that we have here in the, in that town, and they, but they have eight million dollar houses on every corner. So, when you take their tax rate, they have a lot less people to service, a lot less mon, a lot less things to do, right, as far as taking care of stuff, less police, less municipals, less school, school things, less everything. And they take home millions, many millions of dollars in their two and a half formula every year. And here we have way more people to service, way more things to do, and we don't take home hardly anything, a million bucks a year. You know, it's, it's hardly enough to fund, fund the difference in the school salaries.
And that opens a whole nother conversation on proper, Proposition two and a half when it was enacted, and whether it's still relevant, or, you know, things like that.
Yeah, they just didn't know.
I mean, we can just go on for a long time.
They just had no idea, you know, so...
I also, I didn't pass this out, but I was talking to Ken Buckland about this as well, and I do have a, kind of a memo from him, being in the planning and development position that he is in, and one of the things that he said, the usual base of going, reason to go to a split rate would be if there are inequities, inequalities in valuations, and as far as the planning and development, he has not seen any. And also, if there's a disproportionate use of demand, or demand of municipal services from the business sector, and his comment on that was, although I spend a lot of time puzzling through business retention and growth, again, I have no indication of such a, a And he basically mirrored what I had said about not changing the rev, rev, excuse me, the revenue, and some of the other things that I had said. If you would like a copy of this, I'd be happy to...
Yeah, you can give it to us, we'll put it in the file.
Okay.
Absolutely.
But just as kind of backing up, so you don't think it's just my personal opinion as well?
Well, I mean...
We all know that I'm opinionated, but, you know, there's, there's more to it. Don't, just don't ask Derek.
All right, so anybody else have any questions? All right, so, could I have a motion to...
Well, she...
To extend the hearing until...
If you wish to do the single factor, it'd be a motion of residential factor of one.
Well, but we're, we're actually gonna move this until next week, right?
Motion's moved to next week.
You can vote tonight if you want, and then we reaffirm the vote and have you sign the actual paper next week.
Yeah, we can, we'll do it next week, we'll do the whole thing, we'll just move the hearing now, and then we'll take the vote at the hearing. Okay? Alan voted, moved, moved the hearing till next week, or to continue it until next week.
Continue it.
Do I have a second?
I already did.
All right, second by Mary. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, so, next week we'll, we'll vote it and sign the papers, and you'll be all set. I'm sure it's, I'm sure, I think we've all decided what we're gonna do, but...
And if you have any further questions, feel free to stop by our office, we'll be glad to...
Give me a call.
Okay, awesome, thank you, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Huh? All right, we have road commissioners?
Ooh.
Yep. We have a road commissioner?
She's got the major final on this one.
That clerk right there.
Right here.
Yeah, she can put it in the file for her. All right, um...
We've got...
Two road commissioners, right?
Ms. Jackie Nichols.
Jackie.
Judith Whiteside.
And Ms. Whiteside, come on down. Uh, Jackie.
There's an issue.
Give us some of the documentation.
Oh, okay, to the press, okay.
You can bring it up.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Hello, Judy.
Good afternoon.
Welcome back.
Haven't seen you in quite a while.
I was trying to run away.
But just so you don't look like you've changed much, you look great.
Thank you.
It's her first night I met Judy Whiteside, she threw our audit up in the air.
That's correct, I did. It deserved to be thrown up in the air. It has improved substantially since then due to your good work and the good work of the people who work for you.
All the people that work, thank you for that, though.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, Judy, you can start, or you wanna be on a...
Judy's getting it.
Huh?
Judy.
Yeah.
Can I interrupt for a minute, just so we can clarify? The, back in two thousand and ten, when the sewer, excuse me, when the road commissioners were, Article forty-one were changed, we set up who the members were, it's a total of seven, we only have one opening, Mr. Heaney has left for Florida, so we only have one, one place to put someone. We, we don't have any more room for that. If you wanna change or do anything, we'd have to go back to town meetings, since this was done at town meeting.
I believe there was a letter sent by way of recommendation from the road commissioners, saying that they recommended Mrs. Whiteside for the position, and also...
But they can't do the second piece.
You for the, for an ex officio.
Unfortunately, I don't believe they can do that because of how this was put together.
Yeah, she can still go to the meetings.
Yes, they can.
She can go to the meetings, she's a resident.
It's not, what I would suggest is that we would go ahead and for the spring town meeting, we can either do a warrant article to change, make an adjustment, or, the issue that Jackie has, she can explain it, is that when they go to do street numbers, there's a problem for her when they assign numbers and don't check with her first. And that's a mechanical thing, which can also be done as well. But the way this is set up, it's pretty much locked in.
It's not just her that has the problem. It's not just Ms. Nichols who has the problem about numbers.
We know.
There's an enormous amount of work to be done on that committee.
Judy, just a person for it.
Amen.
She loves these projects.
All right, so, it's, does anybody have any questions of these two young ladies?
Yes, how many meetings of the road commission have you been to in the last year, or the last three months?
Well, we were only invited to...
No, but how many have you been to as a...
One.
One, and yourself?
One.
Okay, thank you.
I can't hear you, Jackie. One.
Did you turn your thing off again?
One.
She loves it.
One.
Anybody else have a question?
Nope.
All right.
But I've spent a lot of time down in building trying to fix issues, so...
So, what's your pleasure? We have one opening right now, so what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion for Mrs. Whiteside.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Alan, seconded by Peter. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Uh, one abstention?
Okay.
Okay, four, zero, one.
Thank you.
You know what to do.
Thank you.
Thank you for your interest.
Thank you, ladies.
All right, uh, let's see...
I get to go home finally.
All right, so we're gonna go back up, which we didn't do, and do board comments. Does anybody have any board comments?
Uh-uh.
Yeah, I'm bored.
Any board comments? Alan?
No.
Jim?
I think we kinda took care of the discussion here this evening.
I'm good, thanks.
Mary?
Oh, actually, wait a minute, I do have one. I'd like to thank Madame Moderator for how well town meeting went last week. You know, I still have some sort of philosophical issues with the remote voting, but I have to say, from a technical standpoint, it worked out very well. And, you know, maybe this is gonna be the wave of the future, and if that's what happens, you know, it does result in an, an easy way to tally the votes. Granted, we didn't have a lot of controversial articles on there, I don't think there was a single vote that was even remotely close, so there may have to be some other old methodologies brought back if we have close votes in the future, but I just wanted to thank her and Alan and everybody else who was involved in getting that before us, so at least we could see how it looked.
I'd like to know who, like, those ten people are who voted against everything. That's what I'd like to know. And there was four who voted not to dissolve the warrant.
They were having so much fun.
They were having such a good time.
Which personally, doesn't mind me saying, David Hurd was one that voted no, just to see if the system worked.
Oh, is that, oh.
Ah.
That's pretty good. All right, any other town business not reasonably anticipated the last twenty-four hours? All right, moving on to the town administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, really, I'd just like to thank everyone, the almost hundred and ninety members of the community that came out to vote on, you know, we said it's non-controversial articles, and they still came out, and we appreciate their input, their time, the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Capital Planning, the Sewer Commissioners, all of those, and the employees that worked hard to bring all these forward, so, there were some residents as well that did, that were working with CPC and such, so I'd like to thank them all. It's, I don't think people realize how much goes into this before it gets to that point, so there's everybody involved, I'd really like to just say thank you.
All right, that's it? That's your whole report? Awesome. Liaison reports, please.
Yes.
All right, Alan, go ahead.
The liaison of the year is about to step up to the plate.
Well, the Jewish New Year was a month ago, where I said...
Okay, Derek did mention that the school committee did meet today to present their wish list budget, I would say, which is what they usually do, and they went through all the different phases of the schools and everything, I think it was very well done. And there'll be the usual system where we go through, and they'll have their grant programs to offset some, and Mr. Sullivan and the school department and school committee will work out the net budget by the time it's done. Charter review committee met yesterday. Mrs. Whiteside was voted chair, and Holly Van Nest, N-E-S-T, was voted clerk. We had six out of the eight members there, one member was a family issue, and the eighth member did not contact anyone, so I have to check into that. We still, and the public needs to know, we have still one more opening, it's supposed to have nine, and I'm reaching out again, it's been going on for a long time, I need one more member, no, Sandy, don't look at me. But we need one more member to, to get this done, it's a lot of work, the charter has eight different major sections and a lot of subsections, plus the fact that the bylaws affect the charter as well because of the interact together. This group has already, in one day, decided they're gonna meet basically four times a month until May, to get done whatever they have to get done, so they're more than happy to go to work on this. Next item is, I was in Boston with Ken Buckland last week, we went to visit Mass DOT about the grade crossing across Emergence Way for control gates for the railroad, in order to do, somewhere down the line, the actual development of Emergence Way for that project that's been sitting and we've been looking at for quite a few years now. We met with the undersecretary, her assistant, engineering firm that also works for them as well as another person there. They did their best to really try and discourage us from doing anything, which is what I kind of expected, unfortunately, myself and Ken just smiled and said, fine, we'll do that, we'll do this. So, they've agreed to work with us, we have to basically do most of the work, but there is a reasonably good opportunity for us to have something go through at the end of the timeframe. It won't be easy, it's not gonna be inexpensive, but there's a possibility. Other issue we have is the Mass Municipal Association, I have final discussions this coming Tuesday, next week, before the annual meeting in January. We've got basic things that we'll be lobbying for, for the year. We're concerned, obviously, with Chapter ninety, funding still being at the two hundred million dollars, which doesn't take into effect inflation or anything else. We're a little concerned about the Chapter seventy proposed school budgeting process. Mr. Sullivan spoke at the school committee meeting for me today about some concerns about how this might affect us dollar-wise versus, you know, the minimum school spending, and how it could affect the town's budget as well. And there are a few other things as far as zoning changes that may or may not come through, where a zoning article, which normally requires a two-thirds majority, if the state is able to put their program through, it will go to a simple majority, which would make zoning issues much easier to get changes on. So we'll see how all this goes, and there's a lot of things there, hopefully, when I'm here next week on Tuesday, I'll give you some better information on all that as well. And last, GATRA has their annual meeting tomorrow, and I'll let you know if we have any new bus routes or anything coming through Wareham that will help us, that's it.
Okay, Jim?
The Carver, Marion, Wareham Subcommittee met, discussing proposals on how to continue operation, looking at budgets. Got a meeting coming up the twentieth here, and I guess it will be this building, I'll find out tomorrow which room. And just another Subcommittee, too, that's gonna be looking at the process of, the process of dissolution of the district. But I see, see dissolution as a part of the entire agreement, and they really should be addressing the agreement on the process to move forward and how, and have it reflect what the actual operation is, and not something from nineteen seventy-three, when we were using the landfill and trucks were going in there and getting teared out. And then the dissolution would just be one part of that. Marion, as you know, has taken the initial step towards, no, no, of leaving the district, not dissolving the district, but they did, they did mention it, and they're looking, I see it as they're looking for a payout. In a dissolution, they get a payout of a percentage of, of whatever you can do. We're supposed to do everything by weight, but we don't, because we don't have a scale at the, so you can figure that out by the number of people coming in, the average amount of trash people throw out, or the average that we get in a week there, and how many come from each town, you can determine all that. But if we stay, if, if Carver and Wareham stay as a district, I don't believe there's a payout, personally. I think they just remove themselves from the district. And what do we do if we do dissolve? I don't think it's in our best interest, in the sense that, what are we gonna provide for citizens of the town that might be half the cost of curbside pickup, projected? And are the towns gonna take it over? Then they have to do all the capital improvements to get there, we already have the facilities, right? So we need to upgrade a couple of the compactors because they're getting old. We can either keep two, two operations going, Benson Brook and Rochester are cut down to one. We own Rochester, we don't own Benson Brook, we have a long-term lease, whereas if we don't do business there, then it reverts back to the town of Marion for a dollar, and then they have their own facilities to operate out of. So there's a lot going on, a lot of moving parts, trying to get a meeting put together with the three representatives and Derek, so we can all get on the same page, and possibly Mr. Bowen, too, and have a discussion and, and work in unison towards a common goal. Thank you.
Okay. Peter?
No.
Mary?
Nope.
All right, so, I was at the school building committee yesterday, so the site work is going along pretty fast and going pretty furious, so that's kinda neat. There, I've got about forty-seven percent of the site equalized at this point, which is pretty good. The draft, the ninety percent was voted on last night, and the, the bids, packages will go out in January, we wanted to bid it in the winter, we thought we'd get a better price that way. We, we had the, the, what do you, the archaeologist has not found anything or had any issues so far, there's only one area left for him to look through, or for them to look through, only one little area left, and they're gonna do that soon, and then that will pretty much come underneath the archaeologist and all the stuff that's relevant to the site, which is really kinda good. It's, 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 it's progressing pretty good, actually, the, I thought that the site, with all the rain and everything, would be worse than it is, but at one... than it is, but at one point, there was a million gallons of water running down the site during one of the storms. Million gallons of water. And as you know, it came out towards the street, which was sort of problematic, so they had to go in and put some drains in, some riprap in some drain, drainage areas around to keep the water from going off, because it was going over the waddles, with there was so much water coming down, because it's a big open site now, you know, of course, so there's not much to keep it from running at this point. But even with that all said, it's all been accomplished, and at the 40%, seven rate, they should have, they should be right on schedule. As a matter of fact, they're out, they're actually right on schedule, they're actually a little bit ahead of schedule, which is kinda great, so.
Can I ask you a question on that? Who's the boots in the ground for the town there?
There's a--
Sure what's getting done and when--
We have a, we have a firm that they hired, it's PMC--
They hired to work for us, or?
Yeah, he, they, he's, they have more than one guy on site. He's, they're always on site. I have, everybody has their contact to him, and we can get in touch with him and all that. And he's so far done a pretty good job at what they're doing, so. And they've managed to save us some money, too, so.
Yeah, so they let us know what's been completed and what we should pay, or should pay and sign up.
PMA consultants.
We use them as part of it.
For instance, this last change, there needed to be a, basically a change order to do, to fix what was happening, especially with the major rain coming, and they reached out to me on it, and there's no time to have an authorization from the committee, obviously, and that's one of the things, so, you know, I said, under emergency, I know you need authorization, please go ahead and bring it forward to the committee, and that's sort of one of the strange things that I, you know, we, at times you have to make the decision, you can't let it not happen, but that's, they are there watching out and working for it.
You, you know, the committee informed--
Yeah, the committee--
--to where we're at in the construction, and then if the bills that we're signing off are appropriate to be signed off on.
And then there's a second review as well for the, not just from them. I know Mr. Menard goes over all the bills to the, for the construction as well.
Well, we have a committee of three from the committee that goes through the bills as they come in. And then now, every committee member's gonna be getting the same bills, they'll get copies of the bills, and just so you know, as this thing continues, there'll be literally thousands of them.
Right, but when we get them--
Yeah, when we get them, they've already been--
They should be signed.
They've all been vetted by then, hopefully. But that doesn't mean that we can't ask questions, you know, I mean, we should.
Are you looking for a signature sheet, Jim, on it?
Yeah, something to say, we reviewed this and everything's good, boom.
Yeah, that's gonna, that's, that's where, that's in the works, by the way.
Okay, yeah.
It's already in place.
Huh? No, well, it's in the works, though, because it hasn't been being followed, okay?
It wasn't followed, so today's--
It's going, it's getting taken care of, so that that will all happen. We had some issues with how the things were handled, it's gonna be broken out of the warrant on a separate sheet, as you can see, tonight you had a separate sheet from some, from, what is it, Sun something or another, whatever their name is, who's the site people, there's a separate sheet now, that, that's why you didn't see that. Normally it's in the warrant, but now you're gonna see a separate sheet on it all the time.
The signature, boom, would be great.
There's supposed to be a sign out sheet with it, which there wasn't.
So you'll have all that. You'll get, there'll be a lot, it's getting defined a lot greater.
Appreciate that.
And I think you're gonna find, I think, I think, and I, you know, I don't wanna say too much yet, but it looks like we're working towards a pretty good situation, that we might get some pretty good bids in, we'll see. But I think we might be, we might really be in a good, in a place, in a better place than we think we are. I can't say too much yet, because you never know. One of the things we just had to do is vet all of the potential bidders, which includes the mechanics and so on, so, you know, the plumbers, electricians, they have to actually step up to the plate and say, okay, I qualify, and here's why, and do all that, so they're in the process of a lot of that, going on to get all the, because otherwise they can't even bid, you know? So, and before they get the bid package in January, when they finally--
You have to be a qualified bidder to--
Yeah, you gotta be qualified, and it's gonna be quite a large package, obviously. Some pretty big system. But the point is that it's going on schedule, so it's 2021 December date, 2021 December date is still--
That's great.
--valid date, and they tend to hold to it, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, it's just sort of something that's been, I've been going into Kendrick and speaking to some of the businesses, I heard something, that's the industrial park, from Dorothy Cox Candy and Stone Path, they used to have signs up on the highway there that they, they put out, and basically you'd be across from Wareham Crossing, and that was driving a lot of foot traffic to them. Dorothy Cox said it was really good for their retail operation. Stone Path was saying they were surprised how many people were telling them, and with those down, it's really dried up. We're hurting the businesses in there by not allowing those signs to be on those locations.
So it's looking bad.
Well, you know, it would probably be better if somehow we came up with a system that they had a sign at the, at the corner.
We're trying to work through--
And we put it up and get everybody onto the sign, you know, whatever, so that--
We're trying to work through the state on that, because that's state-owned property. Our property that's further back, that's the Wareham Redevelopment Authority.
It's too far back.
It's too far back. We've talked about cleaning it, gone up to the state, but those businesses--
Who took the other signs down, the state?
They're saying the town did.
No, we didn't.
We didn't take them down.
Definitely not.
All right, because it's--
A-frame signs?
Yeah.
Yeah, technically, they're not supposed to be there, especially with so many feet of the building and this and that.
Right.
So it's against the zoning.
Yeah, but we, we didn't take them down.
I know, it's, it's just, it's brutal, because it's unintended consequences, and these are some of our businesses that are--
I would say the state most likely did.
State had to have taken those down.
Because we certainly didn't, is what I was telling you, it hadn't come to my attention on it.
Yeah, because I think everybody realizes why those signs were there. I mean, we have some others around. The guy with the canoes there and stuff like that, those are all not proper signs.
Right, one of the things we've talked about is basically getting together and building one of those, what you see, and having some of the businesses help to fray the cost of that, and it'll lead them in there, but we're, that's another thing, getting through the state to put something up there, so.
Well, that would be the ideal thing, obviously, you know, so.
Yes, Alan?
Would like me to start, to initiate with the state?
Why not? Yeah, I mean, while you're up there, why not?
A request through Mass DOT for basically allowing us to put an industrial park sign with a residence on the sign.
Yeah, why not?
We have an industrial, yeah.
I went up with the Robinsons for the sign on the highway, which the state controlled.
Go ahead, go for it. That's, that would be great, you know, let's do it.
Just send me something that, you know, shows I'm officially being requested, so I--
You know, it's nice to help them out, and that industrial park is kinda hidden. And you know, and believe it, believe it or not, they kinda put some things in there that are more retail-oriented than they used to be.
They are, and that's--
So it changes the whole place.
Part of that is, the industrial park could be, it could be a really nice operation for, for folks. There's, you almost have the, the business condos in there and some of the location, and that sort of changes the, the whole ability, but--
I think the tire guy, too, right? Didn't he have a sign out there? I think he did.
Yeah, that--
He did, he had used tires, yeah.
And then there's Cape Cod Ginger Ale, they're doing a real nice business. Dorothy Cox is selling some of their stuff as well, so it's, you know, our, the industrial park's starting to grow, so we need to support it any way possible.
Yeah, yeah. Alan, go for it, just see what you can do. If you can get that thing expedited--
We can increase the valuation to shift off the tax rate, charge them more taxes.
Just go ahead and--
So we can charge them more money?
Don't tell them that.
Have the Selectmen's Office just put something together, which, you know, gives me a piece of paper that's signed.
All right, I'll get, I'll get something put together in the Selectmen's Office, did you?
I'll start process next Tuesday.
Okay. All right, liaison reports are done, consent agenda, Law Office of Richard P. Bowen, is he back yet?
I thought he came in yesterday, yeah.
Is he? So he must be tired, right?
He might still be on Korean time.
Across the Dateline or something?
Yeah, so he might think that--
It's one day different.
Yeah.
One day, yeah.
Selectmen's meeting is tomorrow at--
Yeah, he's thinking of coming, he'll be here tomorrow.
His trip home would be pretty quick, though.
Are they ahead of us or behind us? Does anybody know? I think they're ahead, right?
No, you're going the other way there.
They're behind you.
They're behind?
Because you're going the other way.
Okay, so he'll be here tomorrow? He could've been here yesterday, but he's being tomorrow.
On the plane flight from Courier, because I've done it quite a few times, flying over, it's about 450 knots speed, coming home at 730 knots.
With the wind, yeah.
Because of the--
Well, that's good, you get home faster.
It's a quicker ride home than it is going.
All right, so if you want to make a motion to approve his bill?
I move that we approve the Law Office of Richard Bowen's bill in the amount of $15,650.
In American dollars or Chi, or Korean won?
It's Korean, right? Korean.
Korean won.
Korean won. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion?